Good evening. I'd like to call the Water Pollution Control Authority and regular Town Council meeting of North Branford, Connecticut to order on Tuesday, March 19th in Town Council chambers at 6:33. Please stand for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We have a roll call, please.
Mayor Angeloni.
Present.
Councillor Anderson.
Here.
Councillor Diamond.
Here.
Councillor Gold.
Here.
Councillor Miller.
Here.
Councillor Palladino.
Here.
Councillor Zunhano.
Here.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is minutes of previous meeting. Do I hear a motion to accept the February 20th, 2024 special WPCA and Town Council meeting?
So moved, but I have one correction.
Okay.
Well, I guess I'll wait for the second.
Second.
Okay, on the Town Manager Report, on this third paragraph, where it says, "Going to give excellence in innovation," the community partner, it says "awkward," I think you mean "award" to the Potato Fest? That's my only...
That's your question? Okay. All right. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. The next is, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes of the March 5th, 2024 special Town Council meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. The last minutes are from March 12th, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve the special meeting Town Council for the 8 p.m. meeting?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstained.
One abstention? Okay, motion carries. Now we're going into the Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda. First item, correspondence and citizen's statements regarding the WPCA. Seeing none, we'll go on to item four, unfinished business. Request to connect to sanitary sewers at 832 East Main Street, Branford, Boston Post Road, map 3C, lot 17.
Good evening. Victor Benny, Town Engineer. Since our last meeting, the application did go through the Town of Branford WPCA approval process, and you should have a letter in your packet from the Branford Town Engineer dated March 5th, 2024, which indicates the Branford WPCA approval and the positive referral back to the North Branford WPCA. The property owner will be required to go into a separate agreement with the Town of Branford WPCA as part of the connection process. Our current regulations do require the special connection fee, again, be set at $12,300. That's per age-restricted residential unit, and again, this is a single-family, existing single-family dwelling that's being proposed to connect. And I did include, hopefully in your packet there, a suggested motion for you folks to consider for a hopeful approval.
Yes. Okay. So the suggested motion is on page 31 of our packet. So do I hear a motion?
So moved to accept the motion on page 31.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay. No new business listed? Any citizen's statements and petitions regarding the WPCA? Okay. Moving on in the agenda, we are going to move item nine, A and B, Community Events and Presentations, up to the beginning of the regular Town Council meeting. So we have two very nice events that we are going to be recognizing tonight, presentations. So the first is the presentation of the ARPA Fund for Nonprofit Checks, and we have two organizations that we approved at our last meeting. So for picture-taking, I think, to make it the ease of it, I'll go out front and have the recipients come up, but if the council members can just stay behind the desk and kind of stand so that you're all in the picture, that would be great, and we don't have to keep going back and forth on that. So the first presentation is to the Totucket Historical Society.
Taking pictures.
Yeah, some kind of picture.
You need to brush it up a little bit.
Yeah, sure. Okay, I'm ready. Just gonna need a cigarette. Should we stand? Or do you want us to stand?
Yes.
Better. Yeah. Bounce it off, good.
All right. There's no bounce.
Okay. Play a little closer.
Well, now I really can't.
Ready on three. One, two, three. Go. Okay. Off we go.
Sorry about that. Yeah, it's on its way. Finance is cutting a real one, obviously. Don't stick that in a bank drawer.
Okay. Oh, I want to hear from the Senate, you why?
Are we on?
Good, not as many as I thought.
Three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Go.
We have the other awards.
Huh?
The other awards.
Coming back, we have one more word up there.
We have to recognize... Come back, gentlemen. Okay. So the next segment presentation is recognition of retirement. So the first one that we have, recognition of retirement, is for Fire Chief William H. Seward III. He served from January 18th, 2005, to December 31st, 2021. The town extends thanks to you for your 16 years of dedicated service on the occasion of your retirement. Please accept our appreciation for your countless contributions and commitment to service on behalf of the citizens of North Branford over your distinguished tenure. Chief Seward, would you...
Thank you. I guess you run. Bring it in, Ron.
I'll go a little back here.
There you go. Smile, Bill.
Three. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three.
North Branford's advanced photographer. Thank you.
Okay. And the next one is the recognition of retirement for Donna Weideman from July 13th, 1987, to April 4th, or April 11th, 2024, also known as Miss Donna. The town extends thanks to you for your 37 years of dedicated service on the occasion of your retirement. Please accept our appreciation for your countless contributions and commitment to service on behalf of the citizens of North Branford over your distinguished tenure. Great.
Three, one, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. All right. I don't know. I'll come over you. You know I like to... It smells good.
Those are always the fun things from the Town Council. So everyone is welcome to stay for the meeting if you would like. If you don't, we will not be offended. If you would like to take this opportunity to leave, you are more than welcome.
I'm highly offended. I'm highly offended if you leave.
So now, we are going to move on. Okay, so we are going to move back to item seven, reports of committees, boards, and commissions. First item is economic development?
I have them.
Okay. Next one is park and recreation. Their February meeting was canceled due to lack of quorum. Their next meeting is next Tuesday, the 26th. Police Commission.
Now I can spend a lot of time because I have a lot of things to talk about.
That's great.
There was a police commission meeting on March 11th. The first thing were some issues that were shared in terms of problems with construction of the new facility, and those were given to the building committee. Chief Lovelace met with Representative Candelaure to discuss a grant where the police department will receive $60,000 for speed enforcement on rural roads. That will happen until May 31st. The chief is also looking into, I don't know if people have noticed throughout the town, there were these big stop signs all of a sudden, double stop signs. Well, somehow the state put those up, and no one seems to know yet, and he's looking into that, and we report back to the police commission on that. The chief is also, also, I think, was really nice. He set up an honor guard for former police commission chair, Dan Triano, which I think was a very nice thing that he did. He also anticipates a shortfall in the overtime account because of the many injuries within the department. The commission then approved a request to purchase 14 portable radios at a cost of $4,667 for use by Park and Rec when they have various department functions, and that will come out of the original money for communications, so it's not coming out of our regular town budget. Just so people know, the license plate readers that were approved by the council through ARPA funds have been placed, well, there's one in North Branford and there's one in Northford. Are we capable of looking for where they are? There is one in each area, and I think there, in a couple days, there were like 4,000 of them read, you know, someplace in North Branford. And the last thing is, there were interviews this week for the Integrated Police Operations Manager and for the Deputy Police Chief, and I think there are three of us from Town Council who participated in that.
Okay.
That's my reporter.
All right, thank you. Next one is Fire Commission.
Fire Commission, okay. Met recently on the 7th of March, went through several recognitions, one to Town Line Way and Spirits, which purchased an item. Anthony, what was the item again that was part of that?
Quantitative fit testing machine.
Okay, I couldn't get the name. The quantitative fit testing machine, as well as recognition to some crew, fantastic work, and excellent recognition to a crew for a save that they had provided, and one of the neat things we got to hear was the person of whom they saved, who had flatlined and they were able to bring back, wasn't available at 10 because he was vacationing in Florida. So that's kind of good news to hear, that they were able to do that, and it's wonderful when we can have those type of recognitions from our fantastic fire and emergency folks. Went through another litany of things, when bylaws, drone policy, and some budget updates, talked about the new ambulance update and getting things in process. There was also discussion of the pension realignment and the allowing folks to stay past the 70-year mark, as long as they're fit, meaning the fit profile of the required... yeah, physicals, thank you, I couldn't get that word out of my head. And then they also talked about some issues with the current radio system and some blackout spots that they're going to be looking towards. Next meeting is going to be on April 4th, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Planning and zoning?
Planning and zoning met on March 7th. These few things they had going on, public hearing for 356 Totucket Road, it's the corner, there's a parcel on the corner of Barelli Road and Totucket, and they wanted to split it into two parcels. It was approved. And the other thing, the other item, was 730 Forest Road, which is on the corner of Forest Road and Totucket. The owner's going to be building an 8700 square foot contractor storage building. That was approved, and that's about it.
Okay. All right. Next is Finance Subcommittee. Finance Subcommittee met last week, and one of the big items that we discussed, which is later on in the agenda, is changing, we need to amend the language in the STW roof bond resolution. There is money left over that we want to start doing some of the renovations, the interior renovations, that the department has, had originally asked for some ARPA funding, and there is money left over from the roof project, so that item will come up later on the agenda. And then we also talked about our transition and how it's going in the new software program, Munis, so we spent some time on that, and that was about it. And we are starting our budget season, so we had our first round of budget workshops last Tuesday, and the next round will be next week, which will be Library, Public Works, and Board of Education. And that's it. The next is Public Safety Communications Subcommittee.
In terms of the towers, things seem to be working okay. I guess there are some issues from what Jeff said, but for the most part, the communications for the tower is working. There still is a problem. Verizon has put their antennas on the tower at Northford, but there evidently is some communication still going on between the tower company and Verizon.
Okay, thank you. And the last report is from the CIWWA?
And that meeting will take place next Wednesday, the 26th.
Okay, thank you. On to Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council, good evening, and happy St. Joseph's Day. You'll note the Italian flag is flying at Town Hall today in observation of St. Joseph's Day. Over the weekend, the Irish flag flew here at Town Hall in recognition of St. Patrick's Day, so happy belated St. Patrick's Day to you all. Work on the town budget proposal continues, and we expect you delivering the budget planners to council members for the March 26 budget year in advance of the April 1st charter mandated deadline. Ribbon cuttings, we do have another couple coming up shortly, and the council will be notified and invited to those when we set those up. Side piece of news, the new Central Cafe located at Central Plaza has been nominated for Connecticut Magazine's Best Beer Bar in Connecticut, and they need local help to win, so please go to connecticutinsider.com or visit Central Cafe's Facebook page for the link to cast your vote and support them. As of February 1st, we've been accepting applications for the elderly homeowner, totally disabled homeowner, and additional veterans programs of the Assessor's Office. Applications, applicants must be 65 by December 31st, or totally disabled by the Social Security Administrator, not disabled by them, but according to them, to qualify. To qualify for the state program, income levels are $43,800 for a single person and $53,400 for a married couple. To qualify for the local program, income levels are set at $50,000 if single and $61,000 if married. This is in accordance with the changes made by the council last year, which increased these thresholds. Applications are being accepted at the Assessor's Office through May 15th, 2024. At Park and Rec, as part of their Artisan Series, they'll be having a class on making basket cheese, featuring none other than Calabro Cheesemaker and resident Frank Angeloni for a hands-on cheesemaking class. Basket cheese is an Easter tradition that is still made the old-fashioned way, by hand, making a beautiful tabletop presentation when unmolded, showing off the weaves of the basket. The class is this Wednesday and Thursday from 5:00 to 7:30 at Stanley T. Williams. The Wednesday class is already fully booked, and I'll be attending the Thursday class myself, and I'll be posting pictures, but only if it doesn't come out ridiculous. The IRS Volunteer Income Tax Assistance, or VITA, program is once again being offered through our town libraries, offering free help in preparing and filing income tax returns for those in need. Those interested should call the Atwater or Smith Libraries to be put in contact with our VTA coordinator. Newly formed Veteran Service Commission held its organizational meeting on Tuesday, February 27th. Mayor Angeloni and I had joined them for their inaugural meeting to swear them in, oversee the election of their officers, and get them going as they begin to examine many items, including the creation of a North Branford Veterans Hall of Fame, designated North Branford as a Purple Heart community, and developing observational events associated with Patriot Day, Veterans Day, and Memorial Day. They've selected Zach Poston as their chair, and Daniel Camp as their vice chair, and the next meeting will be April 9th at Edward Smith Library. I'm thankful once again to Gina Cox and Kathy Poston, who agreed to take the lead on organizing our Memorial Day Parade. We have held two organization meetings already, including Public Works Fire and Police on logistics and securing parade elements. We have some new elements this year, which we're excited about, as this important event continues to grow, and now with the creation of the Veteran Service Commission, Chuck Larkins of the Commission will be joining us as we finalize details to put on the parade, which will be held on the Northford side of town this year. I was pleased to join our Park and Recreation and Senior Center staff for their annual St. Patrick's Day lunch last Thursday, May 14th. As always, they put on a terrific event that was attended by roughly 60 residents for a corned beef and cabbage lunch. Thanks, as always, to Chef Tony for the great work she does, as well as the rest of the team for making an enjoyable event. The Parks and Recreation Team, in conjunction with Public Works and North Branford Conservation Land Trust, once again put out their traditional leprechaun door on the trails at the Harrison Preserve. If you were lucky enough to discover the door to the leprechaun's home, you would see the door into the tree he lives, as well as the stairs and his outdoor sitting area, including his pipe. You could also take one of his lucky gold pieces. My son enjoyed this once again this year, as I know many families and kids did. And we have some important collection dates coming up. Scrap metal pickup will take place the week of April 1st on your regular collection day. This includes air conditioners, dehumidifiers, microwaves, large appliances, refrigerators with doors removed, metal lawn furniture, hot water tanks, tools, metal fencing, vinyl cabinets, furnaces, garbage pails, non-riding lawn mowers with gas-removed, outdoor grills, small machines, and aluminum siding. There'll be a free electronics recycling event on Saturday, April 13th. This includes TVs, CD, DVD players, VCRs, computers, monitors, printers, laptops, keyboard mice wires, hard drives, small kitchen appliances, et cetera. Drop-off location is a Public Works facility at 290 Forest Road from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00. Special thanks to the Solid Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee and our Public Works Department for coordinating, in conjunction with Take-Two Electronics Recycling. And bulk pickup will be the week of April 15th, on the day of your regular pickup. This includes tree limbs, tree branches, scrap wood, rugs, which all need to be at least four feet long, no thicker than four inches, and need to be bundled and tied. Couches, mattresses, box springs, picnic tables, and wooden furniture. No scrap and vehicle parts, and no home cleanouts. That concludes my report.
Let the Facebook comments begin?
All right.
It's a holiday, full pickup, yeah.
Next item is Town Manager's Report on the Permanent Project Building Committee.
Thank you. The North Branford Intermediate School, the project is expected to ramp up during the April break. For North Branford High School in Phase Two, the roofing is now 75% complete. The roof is now weather-tight, and the fasciating gutter in progress. Exterior masonry is 30% complete, with the target completion of been made. Interior concrete masonry punch list is being worked on. Interior framing and wall rough inspections are ongoing. The drywall is next. Painting began on March 18th. For the North Branford Police Department, EOC, prepping the base and final grading for paving is scheduled for the first week in April. The installation of metal roof panels is ongoing, and a clear story section is completed. All mechanical and electrical equipment are 95% complete. Remaining tie-ins, then testing, and startups will be scheduled. Interior finishes are ongoing, including painting, ceiling grid, and flooring. The above ceiling inspections that the EOR and the building department have begun. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. All right, we already did item nine, so on to item 10, citizen's statements, petition, and correspondence.
Okay. Good afternoon. Good evening, Cliff Potter, Northford. I'm going to go into something here, I don't know how many of you are aware of it, but it's a part of many organizations. It's a French term, I'm sure he's been a while aware of it, Michael. It's called "spree de corps." We're going to discuss, because it's the very body, you can't buy this. You can't win it, you can only earn it. And once you earn it, any organization that you belong to is top-notch. So this is very important, because, let me just say this, I hate it when dollar signs override common sense. Tommy and Walter, I don't know if you've ever been in the military, I don't know if you've ever been in the fire department, but spree de corps in the military, you all want to operate at full capacity, from the captain to the cook, and as a unit, when you have spree de corps, there's nothing you can't accomplish. Well, our fire department works on spree de corps. Last Tuesday, councilors ignored important input from people in the know. Changes were proposed, not healthy ones in my mind. You better start planning for a paid department if you don't straighten this mess out. The fire department is now running smoothly as volunteers under the present chief because of spree de corps. Everybody's treated equal. Everybody performs equal, from the top to the bottom, because they love what they do. You start messing with their budget, you're going to take the spree de corps, and you can't put a price on that. When you pull that out of there, you're in trouble. You're going to affect negatively if you mess with too much, and then you're going to lose response time, because people are not going to be treated equal. There's going to be a high and a low, and the lower are going to say, geez, do I really want to get out of bed tonight? They're probably going to say no. You can't get the morale back once it's gone, so, you know, this is not easy for me to read, and I was sturdily upset when I heard what I heard. Who are the town firemen? Do you know any of them? Do you know what they do? Three of them I know are contractors. They bid hourly jobs. They might bid the job out for 10 hours, but they respond to phone, fire calls. They might lose four hours of work time.
From the C I W W A.
And that, that meeting will take place next Wednesday, the twenty sixth.
Okay, thank you. On to Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council, good evening. And happy Saint Joseph's Day. You'll note the Italian flag is flying at Town Hall today in observation of Saint Joseph's Day. Over the weekend, the Irish flag flew here at Town Hall in recognition of Saint Patrick's Day, so happy belated Saint Patrick's Day to you all. Uh, work on the town budget proposal continues and we expect you delivering the budget planners to council members for the March twenty sixth budget year in advance of the April first charter mandated deadline. Ribbon cuttings, we do have another couple coming up shortly and the council be notified and invited to those when we set those up. Side piece of news, the new Central Cafe located at Central Plaza has been nominated for Connecticut Magazine's Best Beer Bar in Connecticut and they need local help to win, so please go to connecticutinsider.com or visit Central Cafe's Facebook page for the link to cast your vote and support them. As of February first, we've been accepting applications for the elderly homeowner, totally disabled homeowner and additional veterans programs of the Assessor's Office. Applications, applicants must be sixty-five by December thirty-first or totally disabled by the Social Security Administrator, not disabled by them, but according to them, to qualify. To qualify for the state program, income levels are forty-three thousand eight hundred for a single person and fifty-three thousand four hundred for a married couple. To qualify for the local program, income levels are set at fifty thousand if single and sixty-one thousand if married. This is in accordance with the changes made by the council last year, which increased these thresholds. Applications are being accepted at the Assessor's Office through May fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. At Park and Rec is part of their Artisan Series. They'll be having a class on making basket cheese, featuring none other than Calabro Cheesemaker and resident Frank Angeloni for a hands-on cheesemaking class. Basket cheese is an Easter tradition that is still made the old-fashioned way by hand, making a beautiful tabletop presentation when unmolded, showing off the weaves of the basket. The class is this Wednesday and Thursday from five to seven-thirty at Stanley T. Williams. The Wednesday class is already fully booked and I'll be attending the Thursday class myself and I'll be posting pictures, but only if it doesn't come out ridiculous. Uh, the IRS Volunteer Income Tax Assistance, or VITA, program is once again being offered through our town libraries, offering free help in preparing and filing income tax returns for those in need. Those interested should call the Atwater or Smith Libraries to be put in contact with our VTA Coordinator. Newly formed Veteran Service Commission held its organizational meeting on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh. Mayor Angeloni and I had joined them for their inaugural meeting to swear them in, oversee the election of their officers and get them going as they begin to examine many items, including the creation of a North Branford Veterans Hall of Fame, designated North Branford as a Purple Heart community, and developing observational events associated with Patriot Day, Veterans Day and Memorial Day. They've selected Zach Poston as their chair and Daniel Camp as their vice chair and the next meeting will be April ninth at Edward Smith Library. I'm thankful once again to Gina Cox and Kathy Poston, who agreed to take the lead on organizing our Memorial Day Parade. We have held two organization meetings already, including Public Works Fire and Police on logistics and securing parade elements. We have some new elements this year, which we're excited about as this event, important event continues to grow. And now with the creation of the Veteran Service Commission, Chuck Larkins of the Commission will be joining us as we finalize details to put on the parade, which will be held on the Northford side of town this year. I was pleased to join our Park and Recreation and Senior Center staff for their annual Saint Patrick's Day lunch last Thursday, May fourteenth. As always, they put on a terrific event that was attended by roughly sixty residents for a corned beef and cabbage lunch. Thanks, as always, to Chef Tony for the great work she does, as well as the rest of the team for making an enjoyable event. The Parks and Recreation Team, in conjunction with Public Works and North Branford Conservation Land Trust, once again put out their traditional leprechaun door on the trails at the Harrison Preserve. If you were lucky enough to discover the door to the leprechaun's home, you would see the door into the tree he lives, as well as the stairs and his outdoor sitting area, including his pipe. You could also take one of his lucky gold pieces. My son enjoyed this once again this year, as I know many families and kids did. And we have some important collection dates coming up. Scrap metal pickup will take place the week of April first on your regular collection day. This includes air conditioners, dehumidifiers, microwaves, large appliances, refrigerators with doors removed, metal lawn furniture, hot water tanks, tools, metal fencing, family cabinets, furnaces, garbage pails, non-riding lawn mowers with gas removed, outdoor grills, small machines and aluminum siding. There'll be a free electronics recycling event on Saturday, April thirteenth. This includes TVs, CD, DVD players, VCRs, computers, monitors, printers, laptops, keyboard mice wires, hard ward, hard drives, small kitchen appliances, et cetera. Drop-off location is a Public Works facility at two ninety Forest Road from nine AM to twelve. Special thanks to the Solid Hazardous Waste and Recycling Committee and our Public Works Department for coordinating, in conjunction with Take-Two Electronics Recycling. And bulk pickup will be the week of April fifteenth, on the day of your regular pickup. This includes tree limbs, tree branches, scrap wood, rugs, which all need to be at least four feet long, no thicker than four inches and need to be bundled and tied. Couches, mattresses, box springs, picnic tables and wooden furniture. No scrap and vehicle parts and no home cleanouts. That concludes my report.
Let the Facebook comments begin?
All right.
It's a holiday, a cold pickup, yeah.
Next item is Town Manager's Report on the Permanent Project Building Committee.
Thank you. The North Branford Intermediate School, the project is expected to ramp up during the April break. For North Branford High School in Phase Two, the roofing is now seventy-five percent complete. The roof is now weather tight and the fasciating gutter in progress. Exterior masonry is thirty percent complete, with the target completion of Ben Meg. Interior concrete masonry punch list is being worked on. Interior framing and wall rough inspections are ongoing. The drywall is next. Painting began on March eighteenth. For the North Branford Police Department, E O C, prepping the base and final grading for paving is scheduled for the first week in April. The installation of metal roof panels is ongoing and a clear story section is completed. All mechanical and electrical equipment are ninety-five percent complete. Remaining tie-ins, then testing and startups will be scheduled. Interior finishes are ongoing, including painting, ceiling grid and flooring. The above ceiling inspections that the E O R and the building department have begun. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. All right, we already did item nine, so on to item ten, citizen statements, petition and correspondence.
Okay. Good afternoon, good evening, Cliff Potter, Northford. I'm gonna go into something here, I don't know how many of you are aware of it, but it's a part of many organizations. It's a French term, I'm sure, you've been a while aware of it, Michael. It's called the spree decor. Um, to discuss. Because it's the very body, you can't buy this. You can't win it, you can only earn it. And once you earn it, any organization that you belong to is top-notch. So, this is very important because, um, let me just say this. I hate it when dollar signs override common sense. Tommy and, and, um, Walter, I don't know if you've ever been in the military, I don't know if you've ever been in the fire department, but spree decor in the military, you all wanna operate at full capacity, from the captain to the cook. And as a unit, when you have spree decor, there's nothing you can't accomplish. Well, our fire department works on spree decor. Last Tuesday, councilors ignored important input from people in the know. Changes were proposed, not healthy ones in my mind. You start, you better start planning for a paid department if you don't straighten this mess out. The fire department is now running smoothly as volunteers under the present chief because of spree decor. Everybody's treated equal. Everybody performs equal, from the top to the bottom, because they love what they do. You start messing with their budget, you're gonna take the spree decor and you can't put a price on that. When you pull that out of there, you're in trouble. You're gonna affect negatively if you mess with too much. And then you're gonna lose response time, because people are not gonna be treated equal. There's gonna be a high and a low. And the lower are gonna say, jeez, do I really wanna get out of bed tonight? They're probably gonna say no. You can't get the morale back once it's gone. So, uh, you know, this is not easy for me to read and I was sturdily upset when I heard what I heard. Who are the, the town firemen? Do you know any of them? Do you know what they do? Three of them I know are contractors. They bid hourly jobs. They might bid the job out for ten hours, but they respond to phone, uh, fire calls. They might lose four hours of work time. What's that do to their profit? Ken Newbig, Keith Durbacher, Gary Pedersen, they always run, but it costs them. It costs them profits out of your business. Other businesses in town, they get to keep going. They might be irritated by the sounds of the sirens going by, but they still can do what they do. These guys have stopped, dropped and rolled the fire trucks. They bid jobs at the hourly rate, so say a ten-hour job, four hours at a fire, he's now gotta make a profit on six hours' work. How did they get there to the firehouse? They don't call an Uber. They get in their own car, use their own gas and go to the firehouse and roll the equipment. They're never paid back for that. I just, day, night, weekends, holidays. How many people remember the Schatz Farm burned down on Thanksgiving? Every farmer in town rolled for that fire, had to drop their turkey dinner utensils and go to that fire. And they did. That's the kind of guys we got. So stop messing with them. Do you lose money if you're not a fireman? The sirens, no, your business still flies. Your sirens, uh, you know, might affect your noise level. Area demands. Northford, so different than downtown. Northford's got farms, but no hydrant. You need water, you need different kinds of trucks. You need kind of, different kind of operator instructions. Down here, you got more tall buildings, so you need a ladder truck. So you have to, those guys have to be trained on the ladder trucks. You just can't pass equipment around and people around, 'cause they're not here. North Branford has bigger buildings, more traffic and different types of trucks, so it's difficult for skill sets. I feel that you're micromanaging a job you never did. So how can you help them if you never did, you never sat in their, uh, car, you know, walked in their shoes? So how can you put input into something you've never done? And you can say, I'm, I'm angry, I'm angry at all at the people involved. Listen to the people in the know, they're talking to you. Back off, do what's right. These firemen deserve your respect, they have more than earned mine. These firemen, stop putting dollar signs on their backs. That's not what this town's about and I hope, I'll move out if we become that kind of town. As much as I tell you I love this town, if we go down and dollar sign dirty, you're, you're going the wrong way. Walter, you're a good welder. I love the work you do. When I bring something to you, do I tell you how to do the job? I respect your intelligence, because you know your job and you do excellent work. I'll be back in a heartbeat if I ever need it. But as far as you having input to the fire department, I don't think you're qualified. That's my opinion. Uh, this town is the lifeblood. I mean, these guys keep us alive. I had the misfortune of needing their services December eighth. They were there. We gotta be there for our citizens. We can't put a price on that. Get rid of the damn dollar signs. I'll pay more taxes, because I've had the experience of this service. So I probably won't get Christmas cards from some of you, but I'll be okay with that. But go with the spree decor, don't mess with the spree decor. Michael, you had it in the military, right? Yeah, so, when, in the military...
Why do you think we did it?
Huh?
Why do you think we did it?
Well, yeah, but you worked as a group and you respected each other and you dug down and dug, you always were, I always had good, even in Vietnam or wherever I was, I had good NCOICs. And when I came back to the States, I wanted to be a good NCOIC. If you treat your people right, they'll work day and night for you. You start messing with them, they disappear. And that's what's gonna happen to our fire department. And I'm sorry, I'm hot and I'm pissed.
Okay, any other citizen's statements?
I'm Steve Muloney, two twenty-four Foxman Road, uh, mobile home three C, North Branford, Connecticut, and just addressing the flooding problems we've had with the Farm River, you know, I do think now, it involves, you know, the mobile home park, but there, in the entire course of the Farm River through North Branford, you know, it goes to a lot of, you know, different people's properties and, uh, the flooding, it affects flooded out, you know, to Toca Row. We've had some bad floods recently and, uh, I think we should work together as a team to try and fix this problem, you know? And, like, going back to what Mr. Potter just said, like, if you don't live in the mobile home park or not affected by the river, you might not understand what's going on. Like, I'll quote our friend Bob Dylan, "Don't criticize if you can't understand." And I'm saying, please, let's work together as a team and, and fix this problem, like, 'cause I'm just afraid, you know, the water levels might raise, come up higher and do damage to the mobile homes and I'm worried my motorcycles might get damaged, I'm worried that my neighbors', you know, automobiles might get damaged and just, we could work together as a team and try to, please try to, try to, you know, fix this problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Rose, how are you today?
I'm fine, thank you.
Uh, how'd we make out? You get any answer on anything about the water situation?
Um, I'm, I'm gonna defer to the Town Manager, because this is something that Town Hall, the Town Council doesn't directly work with.
Just so for recapping, this is a private property issue mostly, it's, you know, there's an allocated Florida level there, um, which we're very aware of. Our Town Engineer was, you know, out there and has been, is a Town Planner. In fact, I haven't been up to our Town Engineer, but speaking about it again, like I did last one, um, just to give kind of an update as to what we're, what we're doing right now.
Hi, good evening again. So, uh, so I did contact the State Flood Plane Coordinator, had a conversation with her about the, you know, the overall basically health of the watershed, watersheds in general across the town. And, you know, it's, it's boiled down to, again, the, the weather patterns that we've experienced over, you know, the past several months and, um, I, I could state that the town is over, you know, the history with the flood ordinance that we've had, that we've done a good job in, in maintaining the water course, making sure there aren't developments that go up in the, in, in those flood zone areas that are depicted by the theme of flood mapping. So I, I would think at this point, maybe, and if it's in the, the, if the council, uh, can maybe help us out and, and agree or make a recommendation that if the, the town, I certainly don't set the Town Manager's schedule or the Town Attorney's, uh, schedule, but I'd be willing to, you know, get together with the, the three of us that I just mentioned and, and any of these, uh, those residents and maybe the property owner of the actual trailer park too, and we can discuss some options that they might have that I've researched through the, uh, the state flood, flood controls, uh, scenarios that there are available, funding that might be available for them to consider and, and again, options that that property itself can consider and, uh, maybe helping to alleviate some flooding.
So, Mike, do you wanna just...
Yeah, we'll, we'll coordinate that.
Coordinate something and, you know, just keep us updated as to what happens and it's, you know, you can decide as to who needs to be at that meeting on there. I'm not exactly sure the Town Attorney needs to be there, but, um, if you feel it's necessary or he feels it's necessary, that's fine. But the property owner definitely has to be there, um, because this is private property. It's not ours, but we will try to help, um, give them resources as to what to do.
Just, just a reminder for the property owners, um, bring documentation with you at, at whatever meeting you're gonna have, that they set up for you, okay?
Okay, thank you, Victor.
Yes, Al Leagia, two twenty-four Foxman Road, two C. Uh, I remember when I called Candlelaur, I mean, Sports Center was dumping gar, rocks and dirt into the river and that filled it up. They had no permit, 'cause I checked on it. I called the town, no permit. And I just recently asked if any Candlelaur, if he could help us with the water situation. Took time before I got him, 'cause I had to call the two, two numbers. He said, "I can't do nothing for you," and I was shocked when he said that to us. So, you know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other citizen's statements? Okay, moving on. Uh, there's no resignations or appointments, so we are gonna move on to item twelve, unfinished business discussion and action. First item is discussion and review of the two thousand nineteen light ordinance proposal.
All right, Madam Mayor, Councilors, I circulated to the council last, uh, week and included in your folders for tonight, uh, the recommendation is coming from myself and Town Attorney, Town Planner and our conference. Uh, this is the proposal we're submitting to you for your, uh, evaluation. I know it's been shortened by the time, I don't really expect the council to, you know, have, or, uh, take any action on it this evening, but certainly be available to answer any questions you might have if you have any on it tonight.
I'm not sure if any, I haven't had a chance to review what was sent to us, um, and there is, you know, hard copy in our packets, um, so I would, if anyone has any questions, you're more than welcome to ask, but I would like to ask that it stay on the agenda and we can, um, discuss it in more detail at our April.
Can I just ask one question?
Sure.
You have zoning enforcement officer, I thought we didn't have one.
Uh, the Town Planner has actually sworn in as our zoning enforcement officer.
Oh, okay, the Town Planner is, oh. I'm glad I asked that question, 'cause when I read this, I wanted to...
Okay. All right. Um, the next item is creation of an eighteen thirty-one committee. We've just asked that this stay on here, this is, um, a committee to be formed for the two-hundredth anniversary of North Branford, which will be in two thousand thirty-one. So we need to think about that, um, and that's why it's on here, um, just to, for us to, to remember to put something together and start thinking about that. Seven years will go back quicker than what you think. And the next item is Town Center Committee.
Rose, on, on, um, on the eighteen thirty-one, at what point will we, do we think is the right time to start putting something together?
Well, I know, um, the Town Manager has sent us a, and I'm not sure, everyone might need a refresher on, like, the formation of the committee?
Yep.
And who is made up of the committee? 'Cause that's the first step, is to approve that, what the committee will look like and what they're charged to do. And then from there, we can appoint people to it. There's probably not much in the planning stage right now. I know one of the biggest things that we talked about was, um, starting to budget some money towards this, which we can, which will actually come up during our budget talks in a couple of weeks when we start. There is an account already established on the town side, so, so if we decide during budget season that we wanna put some seed money in there, so that by the time seven years comes around, we have money set aside for it, we can start doing that. And then, once we form the committee, the committee can decide how we're going to fundraise. And that's an account that can then be used for fundraising purposes.
Okay.
So, okay, now on to the Town Center Committee, and I am actually gonna defer to Counselor Zampano, since he is the Chair of the Blueprint Committee, and this Town Center Committee is a byproduct of that committee.
Right, so I'd, I'd like to just explain, you know, what the Town Center Committee, uh, would be, and it's, it's a committee that's gonna take a portion from the Blueprint Committee. Blueprint Committee's reviewing all town-owned properties and what they could be, what they should be, or what they shouldn't be. And then we have that big area in the, uh, Public Works area and where the Police Department is, which could be a Town Center area someday. So the Town, um, Center Committee would, would comprise of, I don't know, did we decide how many people, five, six people? And they would, um, come up with some concepts of what it could look like, maybe different variations of what could that area look like, without putting a shovel in the ground. It, it's just to build a concept and present it back to the council and say, "This is what this area could be, this version, this version, this version, and in what, ten, you know, five, ten, fifteen, twenty years, who, who knows how long?" But that's what that, that could be for, uh, that we would, um, task them to do. Right. So it would be an internal study? Yeah. So that, that's...
Right, so, in, in our packet, the Town Manager put together a, um, draft of, it's a resolution to establish the Town Center Committee. And, so right now, the way it has, and this can be changed, this is just a draft, so the committee shall consist of five regular members and three alternate members appointed by the Town Council. All regular members shall reside within the territorial boundaries of the town of North, North Branford, without regard to voting districts. So we're not necessarily dividing it up that you have to be from District one, two or three on there. So, right now, what was proposed was that there's one regular member and one alternate member from the membership of the Blueprint Committee, excluding those members of the Blueprint Committee who also serve on the Town Council. So currently, there are three members of the Blueprint Committee that are Town Council members. One of the reasons we put this in this, in the makeup, the resolution, is because ultimately all of the Town Council members are going to vote on whatever is presented to the council. That's, that's where the final vote, that's where the yes or no gets done, as far as the concept or the vision moving forward. So we did not want council members voting on the recommendations to come forward to the council, because where their vote is going to count is when it comes before the nine of us on there. So that, that's why that was put in there. It's up for discussion, um, but that's the reasoning behind that. Then there's also two regular members and an alternate that have experience in construction and/or contracting. There's one regular member and an alternate from the Economic Development Commission, and one regular member that has experience in the agricultural industry. We chose that also because of the nature of North Branford and Northford, being an agricultural committee, uh, community, and so having someone in that industry having a voice on the committee. Um, and then the ex officio membership is the, um, Town Manager, um, the Mayor or a designee. So ex officio memberships do not have any voting power at the committee level. And we are also asking that the Director of Public Works participate in an advisory capacity. So that's basically the makeup of the committee, so, um, and the committee is formed and would meet, they would set their meeting schedule, but have a report back to the council no later than April, um, thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five. So it's roughly a year. Because once this is approved, then, then we would solicit names of community members to fill those positions and appoint them, so the earliest that would happen is April, it could possibly be May, but that would be the earliest, um, on there. And so the only thing that, or one thing that needs to be corrected in this is that right now it has a date of April thirty-first, so that needs to be changed to April thirtieth in, in the document, um, so...
Yeah, we don't have one of those.
So, that day will never come?
Yeah. See, that was a trick I put in there. Never happened.
So, um, I'll open it up for discussion, um, if anyone would...
Is this committee in this first year gonna need funding?
They could, um, need funding, um, to, I guess it depends on what they decide. I mean, in order to get a conceptual design of what they're thinking of, they would probably need some funding in order to, to do that. We do have a number of studies that have already been done that... We do have a number of studies that have already been done that we are, we're not doing another study. We want them to take aspects from those various studies that are in possession of someone in either town hall, public works, whatever, to, to use that as a basis. And then also, I mean, they would need to work with someone that, you know, this is their field of study. It's not just them coming up to it. So depending on what they're funding, how much they think they might need, we still do have some ARPA funding left. And I think that would be a good use of ARPA money to put towards it, so it would not be taxpayer dollars.
They would have to engage architects, though. The reality is, the studies that we've done aren't about the center per se, they're about the town in general. There were somewhat, some, some things that we did in the past, but didn't really make sense. It was one from an architect that, you know, we're not considering. But I think they'd have to engage an architect and have to, you know, that, that's where some of the cost would come, if it comes to, you know, town bill or building up a town center and possibly working with privatized, you know, development as well.
And whatever that is, it would have to go out to bid.
Yeah.
Because it's definitely over the bid threshold.
Yeah.
So. So are there any other questions, comments? Are you prepared to vote on the proposed makeup of the, the proposed resolution?
So, Rose, they won't, this committee will not have any spending authority, correct?
No, they, they would have to request funding from the council, and we, we would have to approve it, and whatever it is, we would have to go out to bid on it, because I don't think you're going to get anyone under the bid threshold.
I guess a, a question for the town attorney. This committee would fall under the same rules as far as participants being on other boards and commissions as well?
That's correct.
Well, if, if they're, if they're on another, if, if part of the makeup of the committee is someone from EDC or the blueprint committee, so they're already serving on another committee, so they wouldn't be able to serve on this committee? I mean, on permanent project, they're designated from other boards or commissions. That's part of the makeup of permanent project. When, when there's a specific project, like if it's Board of Ed, there's Board of Ed members on the permanent project committee.
Created for a special purpose, as opposed, yeah. That may be the, let me take a look at that in the charter.
Okay.
Let me take a look at that. For your point.
Okay. Okay. If you would like to table until the next meeting, until the town attorney gets back to us, that's fine?
Yes.
Motion to table.
Okay. Okay, motion to table and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. So we'll put this on the agenda for next month then. Thank you. Okay, moving on to new business. So, we need to make some motions to amend the agenda. The first one is, do I have a motion to amend the agenda for item 13A three I's? And it's for, to amend the agenda to add additional ARPA funding for the park rec department for the Mill Road Field to purchase portable scoreboard, bleacher, and player benches. So.
Second.
Motion to amend the agenda has been made and seconded. All in, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Okay, and the other agenda addition, do I hear a motion to add item 13I? And it's for the STW renovations to be moved to the permanent project building committee.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay. So, first item, 13A, ARPA fund request. A, I, I would like to hear a motion, I would like to table discussion and action on additional nonprofit funding until we go through everything. So I'd like to have a motion to table that until we go through everything. So.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to table 13A, aye. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay. Next item is a letter from Louisa Breen, who is our social services director, regarding the North Bramford Community Gift Fund. Louisa could not be here tonight due to a family situation, but there is a letter from her in our packet regarding what this is. It's on page 34 of our packet. So, the North Bramford Community Gift Fund was established in November of 1986. It was funded and from 1988 through 1992, and then after that, it has fully been dependent on business, private citizens, and nonprofit and fundraising activities. So the mission of the Community Gift Fund is to assist, when able, an individual or family with assistance when no other options exist and attempts with other agencies or nonprofits have been exhausted. All funds assist North Bramford and Northford people, and the expenditures are made directly to the vendor. So Louisa is asking for $3,000 in ARPA funds to fund the Community Gift Fund. So do I hear a motion?
I'll read that one.
Okay, motion has been made by Councilor Diamond. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second from Councilor Felicia. Okay. So the motion has been made to fund $3,000 from ARPA funds to the Community Gift Fund.
Can I just ask, is there money now in this Community Gift Fund, or is it just that $780?
Well, I don't, I mean, that was, that was originally.
It was never added, that's what I'm trying to ask, is, was that ever added to?
Well, the only thing that I can, that I understand is that, since the council established the fund and stopped funding it through their budget process, all the money that's in there has been through private donation or fundraising activities. The council has not funded anything through their budget since 1992.
I wasn't sure whether there was additional money that I ever put in there.
There's been money because they've given out things, but it hasn't come from the council.
Oh, okay.
On there.
Correct.
So I, I know this $3,000 would probably go a very long way for projects that they do. And what I like, the nice thing is, is that when they assist the town residents, the money goes directly to wherever their need is, to the vendor.
No, I think that's a wonderful thing.
So, okay, the motion has been made and seconded for 3,000 funds from, $3,000 from the ARPA fund. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay. The next item is, item that we added, is 13A, I, is additional ARPA funding for the Parks and Recs Department. So shortly, we're going to hear from our youth sports organizations who have applied for ARPA funding through our nonprofit fund. And in reading through those applications, the North Bramford Youth Lacrosse Organization, which is one of the newer youth sports in town, part of their funding request originally was, their field is Mill Road. So it's, you know, not in the center along with some of the other fields. And they are in need of a portable scoreboard, bleachers, and player benches. So the, the field is pretty sparse for them right now for their activities. And in talking to the president of the Youth Lacrosse and to Park and Recs, I just thought it would probably be better suited if we pulled the expenses for those items out of their request for the nonprofits and allocate the money from ARPA funding directly to the Park and Recs Department, so that they can buy those items for youth lacrosse. It would become town property, and we would, this way, we can use our vendors and it would meet our specs. And it would be for the Mill Road. That, that is their playing field right now. So I did get pricing from Park and Rec and from Youth Lacrosse as to how much this would cost. And to provide a portable scoreboard, one 15-foot bleacher section, because they do have bleachers there now, but they're used by the players to sit on because they don't have any place to sit. So they would just need one more, and then to get some player benches, so that they would have, the players would actually have benches to sit on. The total cost of all of that could be done for $5,000. So I would like to consider if, do I have a motion to have, afford $5,000 from ARPA funding directly to the Park and Recs Center for the purchase for Mill Road Field of a portable scoreboard, bleachers, and player benches?
Make the motion.
Second. Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded. Any, any discussion?
Stop making fun of me.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, so $5,000 will be going to Park and Rec to purchase that for youth lacrosse. Okay, now on to item 13B, application for ARPA nonprofit organization funding. First item is Water and Web's Water Bird Rehabilitation Center. Do we have a representative here? Would you like to come forward, please, state your name, and tell us a little bit about it?
Hi, my name is Donna Powers, and I'm founder and president of Water and Web's, a multi-state and federally licensed wildlife rehabilitator. And we were founded in 1995, and we've always been located in Northford.
Okay, and can you just explain a little bit to us about what your request is for, and how, how the, any funding would be used?
We're requesting a website. We've never had a website. And it, we feel that we're at a disadvantage because we could reach more people with educational content with a website. For nine years, I wrote a column for the Totaka Times called Living with Wildlife, if anybody remembers. And, and I write articles, you know, in the advisors, sometimes in newspaper, different newspapers. We could only reach so many people with articles in the paper. If we had a website, worldwide, people could, you know, we'd answer questions and educate people. Now we're coming on what's been known as baby season, and we get a lot of orphaned ducks, geese, sometimes swans, songbirds. And people, some people try to care for them themselves, and they're not knowledgeable. And the animal, we either get the animal sick or the animal doesn't survive. And with the website, we'd be able to tell people what to do if they found a baby duck before they can get it to us.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, oh, the cost, the 4,000, where did you come up with that figure for the website development?
Okay, there is a, a website company that, they're called Mosaic. And I guess they work with charities, and they told us that normally it would cost $4,000. But because we're a charity, they're going to do it for 2,000, half price. And then 15,000 would be for internet service. And then we'd have 500 left over for other purposes.
You said 15,000?
Yeah, internet's about 15, or, excuse me.
1500.
Yeah, 1500. Yeah.
When you say internet service, do you mean like SEO, search engine optimization, so people could find you?
Oh, yeah.
Is that what you're, that's what they're talking about?
Right.
Okay, because obviously you build a website, it's there, but you have to have someone to actually, you know, when they search you on Google, they can actually find you.
Yeah, well, yeah, we'll search, we'd have a search engine. This company would do everything for us. It would also update and do everything. We don't have to do anything.
And host it for you.
Yeah, so if somebody, for instance, finds a baby mallard or an orphaned deer or injured animals, they would put in duck or waterfowl, and our organization would come up.
Okay, were you doing some fundraising prior to COVID?
Yes.
Because it's important, the spirit of this is, if you kind of missed out on the ability to do fundraising.
Well, we were in the process of raising money for a website.
Yeah.
And the way we raise money is, we have individual donations. We get it, you know, from members. We table up, table outside different stores like Walmart and Agway, now it's called Smithland, because they have corn in pellets and hay and things that we need. And we, I also teach adult education classes at a high school, she-in-high school, on helping wildlife and people want, are interested in becoming a rehabilitator, or what to do if they find, you know, animals that need help. And all that money, you know, goes toward the organization's needs.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Bruce. So do you work with the Town of East Haven, the animal shelter, also? Have you worked with them? Did you work with them? Are you paying?
Yeah, they, they send animals, you know, they recommend that people call us.
But, so they do do that?
Yeah.
So you do work with them?
Yeah, we take in animals from the shoreline in Northford, you know, North Bramford.
So strictly just Northford and North Bramford, or are you doing?
Oh, no, well, it's statewide, but mostly the shoreline is where we get a lot of the water birds from.
So that's where your, your area is, just strictly the shoreline? Is it?
No, it could be.
Old Saybrook to?
A lot of, a lot of the wildlife we get come from the Bramford area.
Thank you.
Just one quick question, thank you for your time. How many animals do you currently have in your care?
Well, now we're wintering over Canada goose, and we have two or three mallards. But we're coming on into baby season, we get a lot of orphans.
Where are you located?
On Woodhouse Avenue in Northford. It's my home, you know, our vision is to have a real facility someday, a bit raising money for building and really, and have pools and things.
Sure.
Yeah, so I just, I have pens in the backyard and some kitty pools. Can I make do with what we have? But again, with the website, this would, a lot more people could be informed, and that would help the animals.
Okay.
Ma'am, may I? My idea is, regardless of where you're from, you know, where someone's from, if they called you, you'd help them, I guess is what I'm hearing.
Well, first, not all animals need to be rescued. So we have a phone, actually, what we do is like the, it's very similar to the medical emergency service, the star of life that they have, it's detection. You know, someone will notice an animal needs help, or there's a little baby duck or whatever running around the yard. Then they'll call us, and veterinarians have our number, fire departments have our number, a lot of different places, you know, they can contact us. They call, and then we decide whether or not the animal needs help. If the animal does, or if the animal doesn't need help, we tell them what to do. Like if they find a baby bird on the ground, see if you can put it back in the nest. If you can't find the nest, construct an artificial nest. Baby mallard, are there ducks on the water? Are there other babies? Then you just put it over, a laundry basket over the bird, and he'll peep, and the mother will come. And if they do, we usually have someone bring the animal to us. And if not, you know, we go and rescue the animal. And then keep them until they're ready to be released, to release them again. And at the same time, we have a chance to educate the person on the phone about wildlife issues. We also answer phone calls about wildlife conflicts. So that helps the public to, so part of our mission statement is education. So that helps the public too. So part of our mission statement is education.
Thank you. Mayor, may I approach for a second?
Yes. Okay. So, do you want to go through all of them first or do you want to go and just make motions as we go down in award? So right now in, in the pot what we have left in our nonprofit is $33,000. Because we've already awarded, as we saw earlier tonight. And so we've already made some awards, so we have $33,000 left in our pot.
Twenty-eight after Louisa.
Pardon me?
Twenty-eight after Louisa.
No, Louisa's not coming out of the nonprofit. Louisa is coming out of the regular ARPA funding.
I think we do it all at once?
Okay.
So you're saying we have 33 left?
We have 33,000 left.
Total, that's it.
Total.
And then nonprofit.
Just in the nonprofit.
Of what we allocated?
We allocated 50,000 originally. We've given out three to three organizations so far. Applications are open until April 1st. So, so out of the five, six, seven organizations that are on our list tonight, the total that they have requested is more than the $33,000. And so far, we have not funded any organization that came to us. We have not funded their request fully at 100%. So we don't have enough money in the pot to award 100% to all of these organizations. So if you want to listen to them all first and then we go back and, and decide how much we're going to give to them, that's fine, or we can just do it down the list.
After this list here, no one else can approach us for the?
The town manager did receive another application today from another nonprofit.
Until the 1st.
So they have until, so organizations have until April 1st. And then applications are done, we're done accepting applications at that time.
Should we wait till we have all of them in?
Well, we, we've already given money and we've done it as they've come in, so.
I think we should listen to all of them and then at the end of their speech, I think we should come up with a number for each and every one of them, okay? And then just, and then we'll have an idea.
But we have other ones possibly coming, so we might need something for that.
Yeah, so that is a.
That's why we wait until the end and then we decide what we give.
The idea is that we don't expend it all tonight. That we would keep some in the pot. So in case there's more applications that come in, we could address them. And then depending on how many come, we know we have one. If we get any others, if there's still money left after we assess that, we can go back to those that have already applied because we haven't given 100%. We can go back to them and give additional funding to use up the pot.
What if we wanted to, let's just, let's just say there ends up at the very end of all this, there ends up being three more. So let's say there's three. And we decided, okay, we have the amount, the ones we have listed here and those three, and we decide let's just split it up evenly.
We, we could always allocate additional ARPA funds to the nonprofit too if it gets to that point, like we need to throw in a few thousand dollars extra.
Yeah, because we have.
And that is my question right here.
We still have ARPA funds left, so we could add to the pot if we needed to on there. But we, we've been awarding at the time of when they, rather than wait until the end, we have been awarded.
So there could be more.
Yeah, we know, there's, we know there's one for sure because that.
There is more money if needed.
Yes, there is, there is more money.
Thank you.
That's needed. So the, the next five on the list are, are youth organizations, youth sports organizations. Youth lacrosse, youth football and cheer, youth basketball, youth little league and the soccer club. So these five organizations, rather than have each of you come up and present your, I mean, we read all of your applications. And we are so grateful for all of the volunteers that in any of these sports and serving, servicing the youth of our town. And we really appreciate everything that you do for our town. In reading over all of your applications, they're basically, you're all asking for the same, for the same type of reason. So I'm just going to ask each one, a rep from each one of the sports organizations to come forward and we'll have you introduce yourself and the sport that you represent. And if we have any questions, then we can ask them of you. One thing that in talking to the council members prior to tonight's meeting, we've all come to the conclusion that whatever we decide to give to one sport, all sports will receive equally. We do not want to pit one group against another. That is not our intention. And I know you all work together, you know, in your individual sports and we don't want to put anyone into that situation at all. So if I can have a rep from each one of the sports that's here, just come up to the front and we'll just introduce. I think basketball had an emergency and they do not have someone here. Just, I'll form a little line here. It's okay, guys. And we'll just start on the end, yep, and just.
Eddie Bona, I'm the treasurer for the North Branford Soccer Club.
Jim Balling, I'm the president for youth football and cheer.
Christine Girlo, I'm the president for North Branford Lacrosse.
Amy Farady, vice president for little league.
Okay. All right, so does anyone, so we've all had an opportunity to read your applications. So does anyone have any questions for them?
No, I mean, I, I'm sure many of us have enjoyed playing for many of the different areas of sports. I played for at least three, sorry, there was no lacrosse when, when, when we were in school back in the day, although it would have been fun. So I'm, I'm all for helping youth sports. I think it's something we need to take very seriously. I'm also all for funding them a little bit more than what, you know, than what we maybe have in the cachet here and then knowing that we can come back. I don't consider this the nonprofit pool. I think this is a, a different area, in my opinion. So I would encourage other councilors to think about that. This is a fabric for towns, a reason why people move to this town. And we need that. We're, town's getting older, not younger. We need to have these type of programs in place. Particularly in an environment now where travel sports have really attacked youth. You want to make sure that your little league and your, your youth sports are doing really well. So I infer just to, to consider this great, great, some thought towards this. These are very worthy organizations. And thank you for your time. You don't do this for free, I know that. You do it with all your equity of time and equity of family being left on, you know, on short meals and cold this and that. We do that too, so we get that. Thank you.
I have a question, for, for everyone actually. Do you, how do, how do you, is there consideration for families that might not financially be able to participate?
Absolutely. I know, and I, I got to speak for all of you, is that we turn no child away.
Okay.
When it comes to finances and many times we also offer free tuition for children who may have lost a parent recently. So we try to fund as many children as possible and equipment, of course, is given to them if they can afford it as well.
What does it, what does it cost for a child to play one of the sports? Like we'll say on the average, what does it cost them out of pocket?
I just want berries.
Football just went up to 395 dollars.
Yes.
From 250, but we, we were in a loss from last year because the expenses are just going through the roof, so.
Equipment's heavy.
Lacrosse had to raise for the first time in, I don't think we've raised it in seven years. And we're at 265 for the seventh and eighth graders. We only had 200 for the third and fourth, but same thing we had to raise because everything else without uniforms, referees.
The little league raised it first time as well.
Yeah, first time, it was first time.
In probably 10, 15 years. And we're not, we're providing a little bit less to them. We're not doing pants this year.
So we do uniforms, we provide uniforms and, yeah. So we're trying to provide as much equipment as possible for kids that want to get into the game. Because again, lacrosse is relatively new, so a lot of people aren't familiar with it. They're not sure whether to sign their kids up, it's making a form. So we'll waive registration and try to give them some type of equipment, but I'm not sure that they don't have equipment to lend this year. So we're trying to rebuild that too.
We pretty much have to give out all the equipment because we have to ensure that it is certified and recertified. It is, it is able to be utilized without any problems at all. So we, we don't allow the children to buy any of their own equipment.
You also have to pay for referees.
Yes.
Which is a lot of money.
Yes.
Twenty years ago, my kids did soccer and I was part of the soccer club. I totally know. And I'm a big believer in no child left beyond. So, and that was one of my things, is that the ARPA funding that you receive, that has to take care of the single mom who can't afford it for their child. Is, I'm a big, 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 big.
So any student gets to play no matter what, though. You're not turning anybody down. Thank you.
Thank you to each one of you. I've been involved with three of the programs. And, and I'm, I know very well that we actually paid for parents who are struggling. And with baseball, we had a few parents who, you know, passed away and we've taken, actually considered the kids to be through the whole program until they're out of age, cost free for the next, I think one of them's four years. So thank you each one of you because I know how much time. And Mr. Bona, thank you because I know you're trying to rebuild a program that has fallen very much. You know, and Christine, you're doing a good job over there and Jim, thank you. And Amy, you know, you're doing your best. Thank you. And with basketball, I know, I was involved, I was on the board for basketball too. So I was involved with every one of the sports and no one's here to represent that. They struggled this past year.
Basketball's not on this, is it?
Excuse me? Yes, they are.
They are.
She just said that, oh, okay. But whatever you, we decide, you deserve that plus more, which we probably can't give you, but just to let you know, thank you very much.
Hard part is getting the kids to sit there and follow material.
That is the hardest part.
I've already signed up. Coaching, yeah, coaching either T-ball or softball, I don't know which one.
I didn't see your name on the, on the hair list.
Yeah, I'm there. Check it out, check it out. But yes, come see me after because I would ask you that.
Yes.
I think we need to revert back to this on the item discussion action portion of this. I'd like to see us pull some money out of regular ARPA into this. I'd like to see every organization here get $7,500 to go towards the group. Make sure that we're taking care of these kids, make sure we're taking care of these, these folks here that are, that are giving up their time. That's why I think it wouldn't take a lot, we can do it with an additional 20K infusion from the other ARPA money. So I mean, this is what it's been, this is exactly what ARPA was put together for. Yeah, it was to help roads and, and bridges and things such as that. But organizations that could not run during COVID, could not fundraise, but these are the organizations that were able to do that. And these are the ones that impact our kids, which are most vulnerable to be bored and doing other things. So that's my take. I would strongly suggest that we follow on that.
Yeah, we're piggybacking on that, just asking all of you. Between COVID, not being able to have sports, not being able to fundraise for sports, how much do you think ballpark each program's lost out on monetarily?
We probably lost a good 15, 20,000 dollars just in sponsorship because the sponsors didn't really come back. So it's pretty much that, that has really hurt us a lot. We still, we're still able to fundraise to some extent, but the sponsorship was what we really relied on. And even when we give them a sign or anything like that, you know, we give them stuff on the website, it's, it's still just not enough anymore, so.
How much does it cost to outfit one football player?
Well, it's hard to say. In fact, we have the shoulder pads, they're probably about $85 apiece. A new helmet is about 395. We, we recondition all the helmets every year, which costs $6 to $5 per helmet. And that we, we're in the neighborhood of 100 helmets that we sent out. Pants are probably another $65, which we usually try to give them two pairs of pants. We give our practice pants and a game pants. We even give out mouthpieces, but that we get from a local dentist who donates them for us. So they're, we make sure that they're shot and doctor, they're, they're safety and all of that. But I mean, all in all, when you include referees, insurance, you know, so a lot of times we have to red lights because we don't have an actual field and we have to practice at night because when we're practicing, it's dark at 5 o'clock, things of that nature. It probably, it's probably in the neighborhood of a $4, $500 per, per person. That's football. We also have flag and cheer, which is less, but maybe, maybe two-thirds of that, a third of that maybe? So, yeah, it's, it's.
So your expense.
About $150 a student.
Yes, yeah, that's, we, we ran and we were in the red for about, I want to say 2,500 last year, which we were lucky. I mean, we run a golf program, our golf outing every year that we make around $6,000 for. And then we do still have some donations that Sports Flex gives us money and time and whatnot. So we do have some sponsors that came back, but, you know, some of the, they get dedicated ones. But then there's some that still just give us, like, we used to get $1,000 from someplace and now they give us 100. So it's, it's, it's been.
Time turning?
Yeah, it's been time.
As far as the soccer goes, are you, you're not using South Central? You don't use South Central anymore, do you?
No, there, premier clubs have like exploded beyond South Central. There's.
Well, my daughter was, she was South, she was premier player for South Central soccer.
Now there's like four or five you can choose from the area. Yeah, so we battle, participation is probably our biggest battle. We, I can lose a season, we were, we were at under 100 participants in the fall of 2020, we were at 75. This is all age groups, right?
So you're at 75 right now?
No, no, we were. We just built, a new ward took over, me and myself, Nikki Perry, she's the red shirt, two other youth, younger parents with, with the children. Actually, we all played in, in the town growing up. Now we live here. And so now we're, we got back up to like 185.
Nice.
And again, yeah, yeah, we went almost tripled.
Good job.
Girls' travel's doing well, my daughter plays.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, so we're moving in the right direction. We started getting sponsorship, like, so we never had sponsorships in the past, right? So it was really, we, we actually offered a free clinic to boost, the first time we took over, we offered a free clinic the winter of 2022, just to get people to come play. So we ate that. And it's, it's worked out, but there's still a lot of the old equipment that we're trying to kind of replace. Now that we're going to have travel teams, we just got to get fields and equipment up onto par, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I get it. Same thing?
We're, we're at an all-time low for participation. We, from kindergarten to eighth grade, boys and girls, we're only at 110. We have kindergarten to second grade, boys and girls, we only have nine kids. So I run a Sunday morning clinic with my son, who's a freshman, just some of the other high school kids to help out and we literally only have nine kids this year. Last year, I think we had 20, but they were the older kids, like a class or get third graders doing the semi that we're trying to do. Because your third graders are essentially the COVID kids. That's when everything shut down when they were in kindergarten. So they're not in any, I have a little one in third grade. They're not, they never did sports at like the town level. We got away with a little bit hockey. We traveled out of state and did some stuff when we shut down. But as far as town organizations, when everything shut down, those kids, we had nothing from kindergarten to third graders at all in this, in this year. Even on our third, fourth teams, I think we only had three or four third graders on each team. Our three, four team, we're letting second graders play out this year. If they want to, to get experience, then I still only have nine kids on that team. I have them so, at first, the team, that's it. And, and again, we ran a free clinic last week for girls, just in the Jerome Harrison gym because we had four girls for the third, fourth grade team and not one single third grader, and not one single fifth grader. All fourth graders. We ran a free clinic and we only got 13 kids. But out of that thirteen, we had six of them sign up. So that's another thing, we want to start doing more clinics. We just didn't, didn't, everything kind of, we're trying to rebuild. It's kind of fallen off. We were trying to get, our seventh and eighth grade teams are great. We have a bunch of kids. It's fantastic. But those are the kids that always played and then took a little break and then came back. It's the third, fourth graders that are really, the second graders struggling to get out of the house.
Yeah.
And play because they were stuck inside for so long, um, everything on screen, school life, communicating with their friends. My kids couldn't work FaceTime and everything else, but I were my cat before. Zoom meetings, I still look at him, he connected Zoom meetings, nine, but that, that's, that's generational.
Yep.
So we're struggling. I don't know how your numbers are at those age levels, but.
Uh, our age, second grade, yeah.
The young kids, it's like pulling teeth to get them.
Once turning is, yeah, very low.
I have a bunch of third graders from across the year free. I said, play for free. I won't even charge you. Play for free, see if you like it. Begging you to try. So I got a bunch of the girls, they're playing for free because we need bodies to get involved. So I hope they like it and if they don't, they want to pick another sport, great, but get out and play. So that's our biggest struggle.
Get the message out to parents too, because ultimately at that age, you have to get the parents to go, oh.
It's the hard thing too, because parents don't want to pay for a program that they think they're allowed to play one year. I mean, across, usually, a lot of stuff too doesn't look like it, but same thing. You have your helmet, your hundred dollars, your sticker, average one twenty.
Inferior percentage.
Large chest protector. It adds up.
Yeah.
So.
My son's playing for the first time. I played, I played four years of high school and, um, I've been trying to get him to play. He's going into eighth grade. And, uh, he finally agreed to do it and I'm, I'm in for over seven hundred at this point.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
It's no joke.
No, I know.
Don't start hockey. Fortunately, don't start hockey.
Well spent.
So I, I, I think we're stealing all the kids though because our numbers have exploded.
That's amazing.
And I'm so.
You are stealing all the, like, third graders, like, they all play softball.
So our girls, mostly our girls, we have next to no girls twenty twenty and now we have added on two additional girls softball teams. And I'm so, so happy. So, sorry.
No, it's, hey, listen, they're playing. I'm good with it. I, softball is my sport, so I'm all for it, but it, that's what my stuff is.
They're all softball.
It's amazing. Something, but I need some girls. I need something to keep the program going, so.
But with more, more kids, it's a higher cost. Uniforms, who does last year? The cost of uniforms is astronomical.
Yeah.
Um, and we shopped around this year, um, since people love to be together, but.
Well, we have reversible everything, so my, my mom said.
Everything's reversible.
We just did.
Things are reversible. Everything is reversible. It's one of my favorite two sets.
We just did it recently, two, two years ago, so that they have to be returned. We used to give them their jerseys every year, but we can't afford that now. So we have returnable ones, they're reversible, we do the same thing.
I did a lot of laundry.
Well, we, we really appreciate everything that the youth, all of the youth sports do for our town. And, um, we appreciate you coming forward to let us know of your needs. Um, so we have, if there's no other questions, we're just going to move on to the next one and then we'll come back to, um, deciding.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do. I, I was there. I know. I did it.
We would really love all of you to be there. Um, it's a really great event, so if you'd be there, April twentieth, nine o'clock at Wallfield.
My birthday.
Is that Earth Day? That's not, is that Earth Day?
It's last year.
April twentieth? Is that Earth Day?
Yeah.
They always, they always have someone there. I know, I'm there.
Okay, and the last one is the North Bramford Food Pantry.
Hi, I'm Linda Delico, the present treasurer. And, um, we were approved as a nonprofit in twenty fourteen and actually opened our doors in twenty fifteen. And beginning with COVID and kind of exacerbate, exacerbated by raging inflation, we have had, uh, quite a challenge keeping our shelves filled in recent days and years. Um, we have the, um, the normal operating costs of keeping the pantry going, which most of you guys have, and keeping your homes going. Um, but by far their greatest challenge has been the food. Um, during the worst of COVID, um, Connecticut Food Share, who we're affiliated with, had severe, um, supply chain issues, uh, which resulted in us kind of segueing into, uh, more and more retail purchases. So we're kind of a hybrid at this point with, um, support from Connecticut Food Share, um, yet still doing a good deal of retail, uh, shopping. Um, our demand has also increased dramatically. Uh, we're currently assisting between sixty and sixty-five families per week. Um, and I usually work, um, at least one day a week there and I sign up somebody new almost every week. So, um, the, the need continues to increase for sure. Um, if you did read the application that our president had, uh, completed and submitted, you know what kind of a job the volunteers did during COVID. So if anyone has any questions about that period or what's going on now, feel free.
Well, I, I know that the application that your president, Rita Nay, um, submitted to us, in my mind, had a very low figure. Um, listed on it. And I know she was being very conscious of the fact that there were other groups that were also applying for money and did not want to ask for an excessive amount of money. In my opinion, the food bank deserves more than what they asked for on their application. Um, so I think that is something that we need to consider, um, when we take some action tonight is that, in my mind, they should get more than what they asked for.
I, I agree.
We would certainly appreciate it.
If you haven't volunteered there, I'd encourage you to do so. My wife and I volunteer there once in a while and we've also donated personally. This is, you, you don't think of North Bramford having people that are food insecure, but we do. Uh, we have plenty of people that need that, that ulterior, and they need that and those nutritions and someplace to get that. So it's, it's important to, uh, I agree, I think that it was.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't, would also like to include a big positive here and just remind everyone that we live in a very generous community. I mean, the, the pantry is funded a hundred percent through donations and, um, the community always comes through for us.
That's fantastic.
Yes. Can I ask about the facility? How's, how's it working? I've heard different stories where you've had difficulty because of location, because of traffic or whatever. How's that going for you?
I, I, I wouldn't say traffic is a real issue. Um, we're in the basement of St. Andrew's Episcopal Church, so, um, it's, it's, there's a lot of lifting involved, um, and it's difficult going down the stairs because it's an old building and so the, the stairs are steep and, um, a lot of our volunteers, and I include myself in that number, are rather elderly. And so, you know, we, we, we do have issues, that, that's for sure. Yeah, and, and as well, some of, you know, some of our shoppers, um, have difficulty, um, you know. We have a handful who can't make the stairs and so they'll call or we'll go out to the car and they'll give us an order, but they're not able to actually shop because of the, um, the access issue.
Something we'll address in the future.
When, when people donate, um, food, are there certain things that are better to donate than others?
Well, we, we have, um, a Facebook page and Rita, uh, posts every week what, what we need. Um, but I mean, off the top of my head, we always need cereal. We always need tuna fish, um, you know, um. Anything, uh, we, we check expiration dates on everything, so, I mean, occasionally we, we will have somebody who just cleans out their cabinets and, you know, everything's a bit dated and that's, you know, we, we end up throwing it out. But that's, I, I, I mean, most, most people are, you know, they, they, they've either proactively shopped for the pantry or, you know, they're, they're giving in good faith and it's, it's something usable, so.
Okay.
You don't just do food, do you? You do, don't you do coats for kids and things like that also?
Um, only if we get them as a donation. I mean, we don't.
The, the Rotary and the Social Services do, do more of that.
Right.
Um, around the holiday.
Right.
Food pantry, their basic is, is food donations.
Food, food is the, our, our primary, obviously, but, yeah. Yeah, but we do occasionally get, I mean, you might've heard somebody say they got
Yes.
a piece of clothing from the pantry because we, we do get some funky donations and, I mean, if it's, if it's something serviceable, we're not going to refuse it. We'll, we'll try and put it to good use.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so before we take any action on this, we're going to go back to item thirteen A one, which we tabled, discussion and action on additional nonprofit funding. So I know, uh, the deputy mayor.
Yeah, so I, I think we, we should try and do numbers. We think we can accomplish what we need with, let's say, a digital twenty-five.
It doesn't matter what we put in there because we can always go back, but we could, we could, we could probably, if we put an additional twenty thousand in there, we could fund the sports, um, at a little higher level than what we originally talked about. And we could fund, uh, the food pantry for more than their request.
I, I would say, I make a motion that we, uh, extend the.
Excuse me, you have to make a motion to, or take it from the table first.
I'm sorry?
You have to make a motion to take it from the table.
Off the table.
Off the table.
We tabled it.
Oh, yes, uh, motion to take this off, um, to item off the table.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Oh, oh.
It, it's just.
Hang on, we're doing, we're, we're just taking it off the table.
Okay.
We're just, yeah, we're just taking the motion off to table this item, so now we put it back on the agenda so that we can discuss it.
All right, that's what I wanted, discuss it.
And you want, I'll, I'll put it in discussion. Once I put it into motion, second, the discussion. Okay, so I'll make a motion that we increase the, uh, budget for, or the allocated budget for nonprofit with an additional twenty-five thousand in ARPA funds.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, discussion.
I would like to discuss possibly all of these ARPA funds here, tabling all of this and us having a special meeting and discussing exactly what we're going to give everybody because now we're just coming up with different numbers and realizing we want to give more. We're kind of now, we're, to me, it just seems like we're kind of winging it or like we're, we're, we're kind of blowing with the wind and changing. We're definitely not. I, I think it's actually going to benefit everybody else, everybody more, but we're just sitting here right now. We're just throwing numbers and we have other people that are going to be asking for more money too. I, myself, like I was saying before, I would like to have, everybody's making great presentations, have all of those presentations in front of us. And then us sit down with what we intend on putting aside for all of this and then saying, okay, this is what we want to do with it. Instead of right here, just dropping it all on the table and, you know, instead of rushing into this, let's make it where we all agree on this and have, I think we should have like a special meeting.
I, I, I'm not in favor of a special meeting just for this because we, the other three organizations that we've already donated money or gave, you know, we decided that night when they made their presentation and we had their application in advance and we made a decision that night, um, for those three. And I feel that I, I'm ready to, to make a vote myself tonight on it. Um, I don't, I don't think we need a special meeting, um, because if there's money left over in the pot at the end, we can come back to all of these organizations that put an application in and we can fund them at another, we can add more, you know, give them more money than what we gave them tonight and those that we already approved too, that everyone would be back into their pot.
And we've talked once to doing this, going back with.
Just, just be making up numbers right now. Let's just say we were going, going to give somebody a hundred dollars and we're going to vote on that now. So let's just say in my mind, I don't want to give a hundred dollars. I want to give a thousand dollars. So we take the vote, everybody votes yes for the hundred, I vote no, because I don't agree with the hundred, because I want to give a thousand. So it's like, you, you know what I mean?
No, I can, you could bring that up and that's why we discussed it now.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't bring it up. You'd be like, okay, want to give so-and-so a hundred dollars. Everybody says yes and I say, no, I, I don't, no, I don't. I'm, I'm voting someone to give more or it could be less, but.
Yeah. It seems in hindsight, we might've, we might've handled this improperly overall because we set a deadline to April first. We probably, I mean, and just as my opinion, we probably should've waited to April first, got everybody who, who was asking for
Yeah, I agree with some of that.
some funding and then, and then did it, but unfortunately, we didn't do that. That, that's just.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, unfortunately, and, and I don't know, you know, because I, 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 I feel, you know, kind of similar to how you feel. Well, I, but I, I don't know what we do now, but, um, but it is kind of, uh,
Just, it just seems.
It's kind of haphazard.
Very sloppy.
Yeah.
It's really sloppy.
Yeah, I, I was going to tell you my reason behind the number that I came up with. I looked at all the numbers together and I, because we wanted to, we didn't want to make one sport versus another have, you know, a larger, uh, piece of the pie. We wanted to make sure it was impactful for each one. So I looked at the mean of what was asked for. So there are some that ask for more, some that ask for slightly less, and I put it within the mean and that came up to about seventy-five hundred. That's where my thought process was and knowing that, you know, there is the possibility that, you know, we'll have extra dollars. We don't want to, we don't want to leave funds in ARPA, uh, you know, pile because they're going to get called back and we're going to, then, then no one gets anything else.
Well, there, there is definitely no risk that there's going to be any money left, so I don't, I don't, I don't think that's a risk at all, but.
We're, we're, I'm almost surprised that we're not done with it now.
Yeah.
Because most towns.
So if, I think.
Yeah, but that's not.
I think if we went with five across the board for each sport, they can actually come back. Because we're actually, you want to go and put an additional twenty-five thousand dollars in there, that would give us, um, we, we still have money left, though. I think we can still put it in later. And right now, if we go and we give them each five, we're not spending everything that's in the, in the pot right now, but we can always revisit. That's something that, because it's going to come back. And I think that, yes, we should take care of them, but I think what, what we have in there right now is what we should use. And then go and say, okay, what's left? We can add to more of it. They can come back and ask for more. Exa- exactly what we had talked about originally.
Well, they wouldn't have to come back and ask for more.
No, we could just actually give it to them.
Because they, they have applications.
Right.
So if I could just put something in perspective, just to kind of give an overview on this, right? So we had thirty-three going into tonight. If we approve the twenty-five, brings us to fifty-eight. And I'm just using the five thousand because it's easier, but if we gave five thousand to each sport, that's the twenty-five thousand we just entered. We still have the thirty-three left over from where we started tonight, so.
Right, I, I, that's, I did the same numbers.
Even if, you know, even if we went to the seventy-five hundred, we're still, we're still in a good spot. We still have a substantial amount left over for, for other people as well, so.
What are we talking about for the food pantry?
Haven't gotten there yet. I don't think we've gotten there yet.
Oh, we haven't. So I'm just trying to put it all together. Okay, we haven't talked about that yet. Because I would definitely like to give the food pantry more.
So Anthony, what's, what's left, what's actually left?
In what?
In ARPA. What do we have left in ARPA?
Thirty-three without the twenty-five.
No, no, no.
No, total.
In the other ARPA fund.
You have one eighty-four, nine ninety-six going in tonight. You can knock in a five thousand off for Louisa. You're at.
Louisa was three.
One seventy-nine.
So we did, we did eight thousand between Louisa and Park and Rock. So that was eight thousand tonight.
So it was one eighty-three?
So we're down to one.
One seventy-five.
So we're down to approximately one seventy-five.
So if we give them, if we do another twenty-five thousand, we're down to a hundred and fifty.
Right.
I see the number.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
Plus change, I guess.
Yeah. Right. Um, so the motion is on the floor to allocate an additional twenty-five thousand dollars from ARPA funding into the nonprofit.
Did anybody say it?
Yes.
I don't know.
Yep. So is there any more discussion?
What's the motion?
To allocate twenty-five thousand dollars from ARPA funding to go into the nonprofit pool.
So we can fund. So we can fund the sports teams and the and the food pantry.
Which is a total of. And the water fowl as well. Let's not forget that, good.
Be thirty seven five for the for the sports teams, plus we did what we decide to sit there and give to the the water fowl and also the food pantry.
Right. So so by putting twenty five in there, we definitely.
Oh, yeah.
Enough in there, and we still have money left over. So if there's any more applications, which we know there's one, if there's any additional ones, we would have money in there to allocate. And if we still have money left over, we can go back to people that have made that we've already allocated money to. So I'm going to call the question and take a vote on this additional twenty five thousand. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay, one uh one abstention? That's eight zero one? Or I should say, opposed? Is anyone opposed? So it's eight zero one for the vote. Okay, so now we're going to go back.
Item B.
To item B.
I'd like to make a motion that we, I'm I'm going to do this first motion, that we fund the five noted youth sports clubs or organizations at a seventy five hundred dollar ARPA award each.
Second.
What's the grand total?
Thirty thirty seven five.
Thirty seven five. At a total clip of thirty seven five, thank you.
All right, so the motion was made by deputy mayor McMillan, seconded by councillor Palladino, for seventy five hundred dollars, youth lacrosse, youth football and cheer, youth basketball, little league, and soccer club, seventy five hundred dollars each. Discussion?
Say the same thing again, just just being the last time I say it, I'm just, I'm not saying whether I want to give more or less. I just think we're, the way we're doing this is wrong, and I'm, that's why I'm voting the way I am, because I, there's some, I think some people deserve more money, and some people maybe deserve less, and I'd like to talk about it more as a council, but I'm just going to abstain from the whole thing. That's why I'm voting the way I am. I think we always rush in everything, and I think it'd be more fair to everybody out there and the other people, and I won't say anymore, and that's just how I'm going to vote the way I vote.
That's fair.
And I just, I just want to make one comment too. Anything we we approve is more than they had yesterday. So we have to keep that in mind, too.
Yes.
So, and that's it, that's all I, that's all I want to say.
All right. So the motion is on the floor for seven thousand five hundred dollars to the five youth leagues, sports leagues, and it was seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Opposed? And one abstention. So the motion passes eight zero one. Congratulations to all of the sports. So there are kind of rules as far as to get reimbursed for these things, and our finance director, Anthony, can you just kind of?
Yeah, you can give me a W nine for your organizations that have them filed, act like the numbers. We can use the minutes of the meeting as as the authorization. If you want to throw up a letter together, that's that's fine. Now, I am a league for the seven hundred dollars that they awarded after March nineteen.
Now, we'll reduce the quarter or?
No.
Twenty thousand five hundred. Yes, okay. So can we do them together?
No, we'll go back to item B.
Yeah, we're going to do that right now.
So now we're going to do Water and Web's Waterbird Rehabilitation Center.
All right, I'll make a motion to award, and again, this is up for discussion, I'll make a motion to award Water and Web's Waterbird Rehabilitation Center, Inc., an amount of one thousand five hundred dollars for the the assistance of building out a website.
I'll second that. Discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to know where we're coming up with that number.
Because that was basically what she said, I think she could probably do it for with a discount.
Yeah, the 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 total bill was, total bill was two K.
Oh, it was two K?
For the the build out of it. We're looking holistically, so we're looking at pantry and water fowl together for the remaining. I'm I would be okay with amending mine to a different number to to do the two K to cover the website.
Oh, I thought it was one. I'm sorry, I thought it was one.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Websites now go for like, it started for a thousand, we're a real professional website, and that's just, we want the best we can get.
Sure.
So, yeah, so he would give it to us for half price, and we don't have internet service, so I thought, you know, the rest will go for internet service, plus vehicles that we have, and printing boards, and medical supplies.
When you say you don't have internet service, do you mean you don't have Wi-Fi?
No.
You don't have Wi-Fi?
We never had a website.
No, I know, but why, that's a different thing. I just want to make sure I'm clarifying what you're asking for. Having a website is having a build out of your your address, your your location on the web. Having, not having internet is indicative of not having the ability to access internet at the facility. I mean, is there no Wi-Fi at the facility? Do you not have, I know it's your home too, so, but, so I'm not, I don't know if it's part and parcel part of your home's website or web abilities, or I should say internet capabilities, but is there Wi-Fi or internet available at that facility now?
No, because my sister tried to get on to use her computer there, and you can't.
Okay.
My mom has a caregiver come over, and she tried to do things on.
Okay, so you don't, you don't currently have any any Wi-Fi at the home?
No, we're hoping the cell tower is going to help that. Even with the cell phone, you have to go outside.
Well, you have.
Yeah, that's different, though. So that's, that would be, with your cell phone, your cell phone typically comes with a data package, so that's why you have Wi-Fi there. But if you were to plug in a a a computer at your house, the only way that you're going to have, whether it be a laptop, a desktop, or, you know, using your phone without its cellular signal, you have to have a an internet connection from Comcast or Frontier or whatever the one is by you. You have to pay for that service from one of those, and that's going to be a, you know, like a monthly charge, like your cable bill and stuff like that, typically like a triple play package they do, or whatever they call it. So that's, that's what you're looking for. You're looking to fund having the ability to have internet to the home and to the to the facility of what you're keeping the animals?
Right, and also to even work on the website. You know, I have to see what you're doing and, you know, what's going on with it.
Yeah.
So this is Mosaic, they're out of Branford, right?
Yeah, they 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 go to the, if there's any animals here, I think it's on, on any hand, oh.
No, I know, I, he's, his office is in Branford.
Yeah, yeah, he works for the charity.
So, this is your, so once again, this is your home or your mother's home, or is it, whose home is this?
My mother's home, but I live.
So this is at your mother's house?
Yeah.
She doesn't have Comcast or Frontier internet at the house?
No. Yeah.
A lot for that. I I retract my my motion so they can further discuss.
What, this is in, is this in Northford?
Yeah, it is. What has that here?
I'd like to up it to two thousand dollars, and I think that's, from what we've heard, I think that's fair.
I I uh. I go back to what I said before. I think we're, we've we've kind of make, made it, we we mixed up what we're doing here. We don't even know what we're giving money to. I mean, let's face it.
That's why we asked questions.
Yeah, I I understand that, but we should come out here ready to take action and understand what we're doing. And I don't know that we're we're demonstrating that, in my opinion, for the whole thing, so.
But we we started the process.
I understand that, but that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean you keep, if you're going the wrong way down a road, and you notice the one-way sign, you stop, right, and you turn around, and you regroup. And I think we're, I just think we're, that's where we're at right now. I I I hear it in all our voices, we're we're.
Trying to figure out what's what, right?
Yeah.
Well, but you can't, but you can't make a decision before you come out, not knowing what it is, and we just found out tonight when we had the discussion.
So then, so then, so then maybe we should, you know, there's there's a time that I think we should table.
This?
Table for this particular one?
Rethink it, rethink what we're doing. You know, we're we're winging numbers here, a thousand, fifteen hundred, two thousand, four thousand.
Mike, can I ask you a question? Does this program qualify? The qualify? All the way?
The registered five wants to agree of the.
Oh, okay.
What are we talking about?
Just want to make sure. I I under, I, that was my question. So. Unusual. Something, can, I'd like to revisit this one.
That's fine.
I'd I'd like to motion to table.
Oh, okay. So the motion to fund for fifteen hundred was retracted, so that's not.
Yeah, I'd like to put a motion to table this.
So let's vote on that one first.
Oh, okay.
If the motion was retracted, or the second was retracted, there's no motion.
Oh, okay. Okay, so there is no motion. Okay, so.
I would, I'm second, I retract.
Okay, so the, that motion has been retracted, so there's no action on that. So if there, if someone wants to make a motion to table.
I'd like to put a motion to table.
Second.
Okay, motion to table, the Water and Web's Waterbird Rehabilitation Center, application to table. Any discussion, further discussion?
I think we should ask the applicant to send us some more information. I don't think we have enough information based on the applicant. I think we need to clarify exactly what that means, website, and what.
So you have more of a detail?
Details.
A a breakdown? Okay.
Yeah, that's fair.
So if we could ask you to submit to the town manager a breakdown of that four thousand dollar request, exactly what that would go for, and then we will table this and just put it on our next agenda, which is April second.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So take a vote on tabling, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Okay, so that is tabled. And the last one is the North Branford Food Pantry.
Do we feel comfortable that we know what they do?
Absolutely.
Okay. Do we feel comfortable that we can come up with the number? Because if that's the case, I'm going to, I'm going to make a motion.
They asked for a thousand.
Oh.
And I'm going to make a motion that we fund the North Branford Pantry at, we talked about seventy five hundred.
We can, I mean, we can always come back.
I I can always come back to it being a little larger, but at at seventy five hundred dollars, again, spirit of ARPA.
Yep.
I can tell you right now firsthand that they put a tremendous amount of effort during that COVID, during COVID, and it continues now.
We still have a lot of families that are, that need food.
So is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so the motion was made by deputy mayor McMillan, seconded by councillor Diamond to award North Branford Food Pantry seven thousand five hundred dollars. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain.
Opposed? Abstentions, one. Motion passes eight zero one. Okay, we're ready to move on to item C, authorization of South Central Mutual Police Assistance Compact.
I'll make a motion to accept and ask the town manager to sign the South Central Connecticut Mutual Police Assistance.
Second thought?
Okay. Any discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What is it?
Um.
Just, just.
Basically a mutual aid agreement when officers work in other towns, or are called into other towns, how they're covered, who pays for it and whatnot. I don't know if annually that it needs to be.
Okay.
Re.
That's okay, I'm okay.
Yeah.
It's all.
And this is a modification of the current agreement.
Yeah, I mean, we we do it all the time, right?
Yeah. Okay, all right, motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion passes. Next one is item D, amending the Stanley T. Williams Roof Bond Resolution.
Uh, quickly, there was two funding sources for the Stanley T. Williams Roof Project. One was a grant, and the balance was bonded through a resolution that you folks passed a while back. As it ends up, there's some additional available funds, and a list was comprised by the recreation director as items that potentially could be covered by that surplus money that was already bonded towards Stanley T. Williams School. However, to do that, you need to amend the bonding resolution because even this resolution was specific to the roof project. So you can't do something outside of the roof project unless you guys amend the resolution. So the list was forwarded to the manager, forwarded to me, I sent it to the bond council, and they provided the revision to the resolution that you have in front of you. And again, once you guys pass that, the money could be spent for these means as well besides just the roof project.
Okay, so the motion is on page eighty five of our packet. So do I have someone that can read the suggested motion?
Hold on.
Here.
Probably same there.
Yeah.
That's one, no, you're going to do that. Walter's going to do that.
I just have to follow a little bit, see if you.
Okay, I make a motion, be it hereby resolved, that the North Branford Town Council, based on the availability of funds from the original bond resolution for the S T W Roof Project, votes to adopt the resolution entitled, Resolution Amending a Resolution Appropriating Two Point Eight Million for the Planning, Design, Construction, Installation, and Replacement of the Roof at Stanley T. Williams Community Center, and Authorizing the Issuance of Two Point Eight Million Bonds of the Town to Meet Said Appropriation, and Pending the Issuance thereof, the Making of Temporary Borrowings for Such Purpose. And that's entirely.
Do I have a second? Second. Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Just a reminder on this project, the total cost that was bonded was two point eight, but we received one point six million from the state to go towards this project, which covered the roofing of the project. And we bonded more in case there were any other additional costs, and also to cover carried costs.
So how much, was it one point two left, or is it five hundred?
I know, well, it would be roughly eight hundred thousand dollars on there, if you take the one point six off of the two point eight, so.
That's one point two.
I have one point two, but I I don't think there's. I, one point two, but I I don't think there's one point two that is available. Right, Anthony? Okay.
Interesting.
Total expense about one point five.
And that includes all of the carrying, I mean, architectural fees and.
That's the bigger roof and the cost, the uh, still down reason cost.
This was in our packet.
Okay.
So there's one point three left?
Roughly one point three, yes.
Okay.
So they, there's a whole list of items.
I saw the items.
Right, which at this point in time, once we move this project over to permanent project, per, permanent project will oversee.
Okay.
These, all of these things, and Park and Rec has two members on the building committee.
Okay, I got it, I'm good.
Okay. So we voted on it? Yes. Okay, next item is Review and Approval of Library Job Descriptions.
Good evening, everyone, Lauren Davis, Library Director. Before Rory joins me up here, I just wanted to say a quick thank you to the town council and to the town manager for recognizing Donna Wedeman for her many years of ser, service to the children and families of North Branford. It's very much appreciated, so thank you for doing that. Uh, before you, you have updated job descriptions for our fourteen part-time, non-union library workers and our five full-time, union-member librarians. Um, I'll start with the part-time job descriptions first. We currently have three different classification levels for our part-timers, uh, but they all share the same job description. So we are putting to paper the different qualifications needed, the different knowledge, skills, abilities, the different roles and responsibilities, um, for something that we are currently doing in practice, but we don't have separate job descriptions for them. I'm realizing it's also coming in, um, to importance when people are trying to be promoted. There's nothing that outlines how you can, uh, be promoted or upgraded to the next level. Um, and the five full-time jobs, for five full-time librarians, share one very outdated job description, um, which we are learning as we are trying to recruit new, um, librarians. We have a position that was just filled with our children librarian. The job description basically says everybody does a little bit of everything, which is not the case. Libraries have evolved in the twenty-five years since that job description was written. So I've made it that they're more focused on their area of service or their area of specialty. So you'll see that the one job description went from just the title of librarian to children services, adult services, and technical services. So essentially before you are two job descriptions that are being updated into six different ones. One for the three part-timers and then one for the three full-timers.
Okay.
I I can make, I can make the motion.
Yep.
To approve the job descriptions presented for one, adult services librarian, two, children's librarian, three, technical services librarian, four, library assistant, five, library technical assistant, and six, library technician.
Make him second.
Okay, the motion was made by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Deputy Mayor McMillan. Any questions?
I just, just one comment, I think they're great, but the only thing is, based on what our town manager has told us, you need to change the, um.
The logo on the town.
The logo.
We've, we've already spoken.
It's the old logo.
Emblem, emblem. Emblem.
It's the emblem. Very doable, right Rory? I mean, I think you guys did, you do a wonderful job for this community.
You do a great job, thank you.
Well, now we can hopefully carry on and be in twenty twenty-four as opposed to nineteen ninety-seven.
Nice.
Thank you.
Nothing wrong with ninety-seven.
Yeah, you know it.
Right.
But we've come a long way, so thank you very much.
Okay, so the motion has been made and seconded, any other questions or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion carries. Okay. Onto item F, Approval of Revised High School Dedication Plaque.
Yes, so, uh, Madam Mayor, this, uh, item is appearing back before you, um, as I noted in my memo to the council. After the council had approved the, the plaque in December, I noticed that there were a couple of individuals that were on the board of ed. During the period of time in which the project was approved, and now, um, who were not included, Permanent Project Building Committee had approved the plaque previously, and of course, they have representatives from the Board of Ed on there, and I think the presumption was that they had represented those interests. But, uh, noticing that, I did a revision. I also went back to, uh, to make sure that they're included, I also included, um, members who were on the town council afterwards, Deputy Mayor McMillan, and then Vincent Mace, who also happened to serve on the board of ed during that period of time. So the idea of this whole plaque was to capture everybody who, from the approval of the project to the completion, was involved. So in doing that, I wanted to make sure that those names were captured, and that's why it ends up back before you tonight, just to get your, uh, approval, to make sure that everybody's captured. I did review all these with the town clerk, just to make sure I didn't miss anybody, um, during that period of time from the approval. And, uh, we've got everybody. Further, the Permanent Project Building Committee met last night, they made a couple of recommendations, which are before you, which I gave an additional memo to you, too. Um, they wanted to include, um, Public Works Director Fran Marola, which I think is a, a great idea to include.
Fran, he has a lot invested in this project.
Perfect to include, include him in the, in the project plaque, and I'm sorry to say anything, but myself. Um, but he certainly should be on there. The other was to remove the former town manager, Michael Paulus. Um, he was involved at the onset of this project, so I do think it's appropriate to keep him in there. But that's submitted for your approval tonight.
Okay, so Deputy Mayor McMillan has made a point that when he was on the Board of Education, he was part of the Permanent Project Building Committee.
He's gonna put me on the board, I mean, I don't know why you're gonna put me on there twice.
Is that, yeah, you're the town council, you're the deputy mayor. Yeah.
I know, that's what I'm saying, I'm on there twice, so. I don't really need to be on there twice, but.
Well.
It was on the, it was on the three.
You did bring it up to me.
What do you wanna?
Oh, so we should re.
No, I'm just saying, it doesn't make sense why I'm on there twice, if I'm already on there.
Yeah, I'm missing this. Oh, so we should take you off the board of ed.
Yeah, you're holding together.
Jeff, I didn't see. I'm like, I didn't see you over there.
It's fine, but.
You can take my place if you like.
So.
Fourth or fifth, maybe.
I was thinking I could be on there for past Deputy Mayor, right?
It's repentant, but it's gonna be accurate, repentant. I mean, the plaque.
Okay, so do I have? Do I have a motion to approve the plaque designed as presented in our, that was at our desk tonight? It's been updated to include all members, um, and to add the director.
But not exclude Michael.
I not exclude Michael, no.
So, so I have, I have a question, though. When I look at the, um, the members, is that, is that accurate? The members of the town council?
Yeah.
Yes, you mean as to who was on during this timeframe?
Yeah.
Yes, because Lou Patton Oster was on, and then Tara Downs took his place when he passed. Joe Fawnin was on.
Al wasn't on?
I said.
No, that was, no, he was gone before that.
Um, and what's his name? Anthony? Anthony wasn't on?
No, no, that was before. Yeah, when, when the project was approved.
So, why don't you bet?
They might, they might have been on when we
They were not on.
were initially discussing it, but when we actually had to take the vote.
Okay, all right.
They were not there.
I did verify those with the town clerk, just to make sure we had terms of service from when the vote was cast, which I think was November twenty-one, if I'm not mistaken. And then going forward to now, so, you know.
Right.
Everybody was serving on the council during that timeframe.
Yeah, okay, now, I, I actually remember the vote.
Yes, it was, yes. Right, okay. So do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the plaque as presented by the, uh, reviewed by the, uh, building committee, along with having Jeff and Dylan on there twice.
You take that out of the vote.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Are we removing Paulus?
No, we're keeping him.
Sure. And we're keeping Jeff.
Tommy's taking a second.
No.
Um. Yeah, because Vince Mace is on there twice, he's under the council and under the Board of Education, so.
Yeah, just leave us.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. So is there a second?
Yeah, Tommy's. Well, Tommy's? He seconded it.
Did you? After all that discussion?
No, I.
Okay. So Murray made the motion and Tom seconded?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Motion passes.
And just, and just so I'm clear, this is the version that adds Fran Marola correct, and it does not omit, uh, Colonel Paulus. Good job, recommendation.
Pardon me, I could, Jeff was talking to me, he does this all the time.
I understand how that, I understand how that can be. Um, the, uh, I was just clarifying that, um, the version of the plaque that you're approving, it does add Fran Marola on.
Correct.
But it does not omit Michael Paulus.
Correct.
Very good, got it.
Okay, next item is Financial Report of two twenty-nine.
The remort.
The remort?
Did you buy your tongue if I did last time?
Oh, God. All right, so the report in front of you, uh, very positive. The revenue projections continue ahead of prior year, eighty-nine point eight percent total, compared to eighty-seven point three. On the expense side of the house, uh, also positive variance is sixty-five point five percent expended versus sixty-eight point nine. The big over expenditure remains the emergency management with the generator situation at the intermediate school, and I'm in contact with, with John regularly on it, and he seems that the, thinks the issue has been resolved. They're running it more frequently with the kerosene in the tank, and it seems to eliminate the gumming up issue and is running better. So aside from that, the report's unremarkable. If any of you have questions you have, I'd be happy to answer them, but, uh, it's pretty straightforward.
All right. Next item is Approval of Tax Refunds. So moved.
Thank you.
Well, it was moved by Counselor Diamond and seconded by Counselor Abelson. Okay, all in favor, or discussion?
Anthony?
Yes?
On the tax refunds, is there, is there, um, is there a possibility ever to reduce those, or is that, or is that, what causes that, let's, let's put it that way?
Uh, many things, what's the first specific one? Many times, uh, people overpay. People that pay online don't wait, they hit the button, and it doesn't happen like on MasterCard instantaneously, so they hit it again.
Oh, okay.
Then they hit it again, and some people paid three and four times, and you're refunding the payments.
Okay.
Uh, a lot of times when people refinance their houses, it's the first guy will pay, and the second guy will pay, there's always overpayments because of that. Uh, excessive payments, uh, certificates of correction, you may have paid for a car, but you sold it. You bring your paperwork into the assessor, and he reduces your bill, therefore you overpaid the taxes, and this refunds your money for that.
I always just wonder if there's any, you know, something that can be done to reduce it and reduce the amount of work that, because it's like double work, it seems.
Yeah, it's, it's amazing the amount of people that overpay their taxes, uh. Yeah, I'm gonna answer for it.
Okay, no, it's. I'll try next month.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? All right, and the next item is item I, is, um, the STW renovation, moving the STW renovations projects to the Permanent Project Building Committee. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second.
Okay, so motion was made by Counselor Cletia, seconded by Counselor Miller, um, to, to move all of the items, um, submitted by the Director of Park and Rec to the Permanent Project Building Committee. I just ask that, because they haven't been at Permanent Project that now, moving forward, since this has, that the two reps be notified and get an agenda, so. So that they're at the meetings. And the, it's, the Director and, or her designee, and John Anofrio from the, um, Park and Rec Commission. Those are the two reps.
Got it.
Okay, all right, thank you, all right. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? If motion carries. Next item is Citizen Statement and Petitions, any citizen statements? Okay. Next item is the Town Manager, um, Evaluation. It's continuing on with his evaluation in its matter of compensation. So I, do I hear a motion?
A motion for going to executive session in regards to the town manager compensation and continuation of conversation.
Second.
Your, your motion should include who you want in executive session, please.
In my motion, we will include all town council members, town manager, town attorney.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained, okay, we are going into executive session at eight fifty-seven. If anyone needs to take a little break while we're.
That shouldn't take long, right?
Me?
No.
Yes.
Yes.